You are unmuted.
I think half of them do.
Hey Ken, can you hear me?
I can.
So as soon as I came out and said that I was the host now.
Okay, good. Okay, I've got seven o'clock. So we're gonna go ahead and get the meeting started. Like to call the common council meeting to order and ask you to all stand for the pledge of allegiance and look for a flag near you. I pledge allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Of America.
The Republic for which.
Republic.
Nation under God.
One nation under God.
All right, Michelle, can you help me with the roll call, please?
Sure can. Doug Saloga.
Here.
Jim Baron.
Here.
Jackie Valdi. I see her. Wayne Dean.
There we go.
Nope, there you are. Wayne Dean. Matt Grimmer.
Here.
Kevin Maples. I'm sorry, Phil Kason. Tim Iker.
Here.
Kent Atwell.
Present.
Tom Hafner.
Here.
Thank you.
Great, we have a special order of business we'll get to for first. The introduction of the new city finance officer treasurer, Amy Buckman. The mayor appoints appointment of Amy Buckman as the city finance officer treasurer effective June 1st, 2020. Subject to the confirmation by the common council and pending results of a pre-employment physical and drug screening. And I believe we have the pleasure of having Amy on the meeting with us and Amy, if you'd just like to say a few words about yourself, be appreciated.
Sure. So as I said, my name is Amy Bookman. I've lived in Heartland with my husband Zach. Our two kids, Noah, who's seven, and Eliana, or Ellie as we call her, who's five. And then our dog Rocky. We've lived here for about five years and we love the Lake Country area. We're a very active family. We enjoy playing soccer together and other sports. We like going to sporting events. We like kayaking and just getting together with friends in the area. We participate in many of the Lake Country events, several, you know, from the city of Delphio. Cause there's always things going on for families to do in this area, which is one of the reasons we love being here. I currently work for the town of Lisbon as the treasurer. And it was my first public position, so I've had. I've always worked in the private sector. And I can give you a little more background on how I ended up there. So going way back, I attended Lakeland College where I earned my bachelor's degree in accounting. In December of 2008, I started my first job as an accountant for Badger Meter. Manufacturing company in January of 2009. While working there, Zach and I got married. I started to pursue my master's degree through Lakeland. Part-time and then we also had our son Noah. After about five and a half years there, we moved and I got another job at Carlisle Interconnect Technologies. Long one. As a financial analyst. And while working there, we had our daughter Eliana and I also finished earning my MBA. After two years there. And having two younger kids, I decided I wanted to work part-time. So I took a position as a financial analyst with Albert's Investment Management and we moved to Heartland. After about two and a half years, that investment company was sold. So I was on the hunt for another part-time position. And that's when I came across the one for the treasurer for the town of Lisbon and started there in September of 2017. And while there, I've learned a great deal about how municipalities work. Especially when it comes to, you know, the accounting differences and similarities and as a result of that, I think I'll be able to transition to the finance officer treasurer position with the city of Delphio very smoothly. And I'm really excited for the opportunity.
I want to say welcome. Welcome Amy and wow, I'm impressed with your experience and your resume and your energy.
Thank you.
Yeah, an MBA and two little ones that, yeah, that would, that would challenge anyone. So congratulations on that. That takes a lot.
Some late nights with that.
Oh, I, yeah, I can imagine. I have two caps I can't keep in line. So yeah, I'm thrilled. I think it's a, it's a great addition to the city. I'm thrilled. Welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Likewise.
Welcome.
Yeah, so thank you very much, Amy. We're looking forward to having you at City Hall. We definitely are in need of your help, so looking forward to it. All right, we'll move on to item number one, city of Delphio.
Hey Ken.
Yeah.
Don't we need to?
We need action on that.
Oh, I didn't see action on the special order of business. Okay.
Yeah, to confirm your appointment.
Okay.
Also move to confirm the mayor's appointment of Amy Bookman as a city finance officer and treasurer.
And yeah, go on. Neither one.
Amy, that's a good sign. They're fighting for who gets to do it.
There you go.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close. Abstentions passes. Well, now it's.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Amy.
And Amy will sign an oath on her first day in office so we can get her squared away right away in the morning.
Awesome. Thank you, Michelle.
And her first day is June 1st.
Awesome.
Great.
All right, thank you, Amy. Thank you, everyone. Okay, now we'll move on to item number one, city of Delphio citizens comments. So as in, as in regular City Hall, ask you to try to keep your comments to three minutes. I'm looking at how many people we have online. And let's see. There we go. Thank you. Yeah, so we should be good to go to five if you absolutely feel the need to. But again, please try to keep it to three minutes and Tom will be monitoring that and you can either raise your hand using the system. Or you can just speak out your name and we'll let you go.
Okay, are we all set for citizen comments?
Yes. Looks like it.
I think there's an audio issue.
Cindy, we can hear you.
Okay, I'll start then if no one else is.
Go for it.
Hello, common council members. I am Cindy Thomas. I'm from resident at Nagawicca Road 2610. I'm joining the common council meeting this evening to discuss the city's continued, continued pursuance of the current proposed Nagawicca Road separated pedestrian path design. Despite the high bid amounts and the public works committee earlier recommendation to not go forward with the current design proposal. Refer to the meeting minutes of February 5th, 2020. It captures the discussion, reasons, justifications and vote to not recommend this design due to excessive expense, increased safety risk and the crossing inefficacy concerns with the covert design. Unfortunately, this common council did not accept the public work committee's expert recommendation and push forward with the plans and project bids. However, the bids came back way over the city's estimation and approved budget, the cheapest bid being $434,000, $111,000 over the city's estimate and the highest being $704,000. Now you continue to pursue this project by attempting to cut costs by several risky means. What are the final proposed plan project update details? They were discussed at last week's public works meeting and we were told a documented update would be provided. There are proposed design changes to downsize the pipes using substandard fill, et cetera. Have these new designs been supported by studies to prove they will be adequate? Having the design to do, having the city to do portions of the work on the city's budget, so it does not impact this bid. However, still is at the cost of the city residents. This is not transparent spending accounting. Allowing contractors to not use flaggers by closing the road to local traffic during construction. This is a safety concern as there will still be traffic on this road during. Removing portion of the proposed path, I agree. Why are we going forward with any part of this design? Now you are proposing to allow for this project to be done in 2021. Therefore, there is no urgency to rush this design solution. Utility work has already begun on this project without any notification to the impacted residents. Gas lines are being dug deeper and utility poles are being across the street from the disaster road down to the price road. This was not part of the original plan. Who made these requests and why now? We do not have an approved project yet. Who is paying for the required utility move impacts? Again, no inclusion or communication to the impacted residents. The new design proposal estimates are still over the approved budget for this project at $444,000. The excerpt from the, from the public works meeting agenda, May 6th, 2020 from Mike Court identifies with the above mentioned modifications, we believe there would be a cost savings of approximately $60,000 from the low bridge price of approximately $434,000 for a construction estimate of $374,000 with an estimated engineering cost of $70,000. The total estimated project cost would be $444,000. Although this does not achieve a cost within the original budget number, applying the budget excess from the 2020 street improvement program, contract A to this project, contract B. There would be a good chance that the total project costs for contract A and B would be under the total approved budget. This is a six, approximately a six tenths of a mile separated pedestrian path will cost the city almost as much as all of contract A project, which includes the full mission road reconstruction. How does this make sense? I request that we have a public meeting to review and discuss the impact and excessive cost to the city for the short section of path that is not part of the comprehensive pedestrian and bicycle accommodation plan and only benefits a small portion of the city residents. With the COVID-19 pandemic, the world and our city is in a much different place than it was when this proposal was first initiated. Is it the city's?
Cindy, you're gone.
That's not good.
I think somebody muted her. Cindy, you're on mute.
Okay, okay, we're back. She's almost ready.
So is it the city's priorities spend well over $444,000 on this questionable path design at this time? Do we even have the money? What is the status of our city finances due to the pandemic? Other municipalities are reporting huge losses and deficits resulting in budget, project and job cuts. Where do we stand? If we have a budget excess, why are we proposing on using it for this path? I suggest that any excesses in the allocated budget for this project be applied to where need is greatest. For example, the special assessment being charged to the Gulf Road businesses for the roundabout improvements that was not planned and are now hitting them at a time where they are all suffering extreme hardships. As the original rationale to go forward with this proposed design was for the bidding advantage and getting the project done in 2020 is no longer valid. I request that the city completes a new plan for this section of road based on the comprehensive pedestrian and bicycle accommodation plan that is being developed. As stated at.
Rose is gone. That looks like a screen freeze, not a mute.
Yeah, and she's over her five minutes as well, so.
You've got 30 seconds.
You, you get the gist of what I'm saying.
She should have a redo.
Thanks for your consideration in my comments.
Thank you.
Cindy, can you send me those, that item that you were reading from?
Please mail it.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Great, who'd like to be next?
I would like to be next.
Good.
So my name is Mary Daniel. I live at 309 Wisconsin Avenue here in Delphio. I have two things on the agenda I'd like to address. The first one being committee reports, E, public works. The rebids of the 20 June 20 modifications. And the Nagawicca Road separated path, the Oakwood Bridge, road to bridge, which was originally $380,000. I'm asking the common council to withdraw the project from the budget for 2020. We have a budget deficit for 2020 and an even greater shortfall probably for 2021. Removing this project would demonstrate to taxpayers that the city is fiscally prudent. We have a debt service totaling over a billion six and we are making payments on it and we are adding to another $349,000 maybe. Because this project has been rebid to make it under the $380,000 that was approved for 2020. As a taxpayer, I object. I'm asking the common council to consider removing several other line items found in the common council May 2020 e-packet meeting in the city's treasury report under the 2020 capital projects summary. First item is $5,000 for comprehensive pedestrian and bicycle accommodation plan. $12,000 for downtown development plan. $9,000 for a veterans Riverwalk viewing platform. This is a total of $46,000. This could be someone's salary. And compare that to the $35,000 that the budget did for road patching. The second item I'd like to address on the agenda here tonight is under new businesses, business, excuse me, C. Discussion of possible action regarding decision-making process to determine whether to hold city meetings in person or remotely. My experience in citizens comments to the plan commission meeting, April 29th, 2020, as me very concerned. I sent my comments regarding the items on the agenda to Michelle so that they could be forwarded to commission members. They were never read into the meeting and the draft indicates that there were no citizens comments, but they were as my comments were emailed. The same format is in place tonight for this evening meeting. So will my citizens comments be heard and recorded as part of the meeting minutes from the email that I sent to the clerk prior to the deadline of four o'clock? And Michelle, thank you for responding to me, telling me to receive them. Right now, meeting formats are all over the place. It needs to be the same for every meeting. So thank you for the time that you give to Delphio.
Great, thank you for your comments.
I gotta make a comment just real quickly. It has nothing to do with what was said. It was just if you are not speaking, please put your microphone on mute. I can see, you can see when they're not, there's some feedback coming back and it makes it hard to hear the comments. Thank.
I should put this on mute, Michelle?
Yeah, I can see that Doug is not on mute. Steve Rittenhouse is not on mute. We might be getting some feedback, which is kind of louder than sometimes when you were speaking, Mary. But I have your comments from your email.
Great, thank you. Who would like to be next?
This is Sandra Felker. I'll go next. That's okay. I live at 2420 Nagawicca Road. First thing I'd like to talk about are the formats of the city meetings and I think it's great that we're continuing to do some of these meetings virtually. One of the things that I do think is that if we are doing these meetings in person, that it would be a great practice to allow citizens comments to be captured and from email and put into the meeting minutes. Maybe we have a word limit or something that would allow those to be included within the meeting minutes. But I do think that there are going to be many of our citizens who are uncomfortable attending meetings in person right now. And if we can in some way allow them to still participate in their city government by allowing their comments to be captured and included within the meeting minutes, I think that would be a really great thing that we could do during this time. The other thing I wanted to talk about was the Nagawicca road path. Many of you should know by now that I do support a path on this stretch of the road. I have small kids. We've talked about that many times. My biggest concerns about this path right now are our city finances. This is something that I, I don't really think that we should have been approving last year and with the uncertainty that we have in our economy at this stage right now, I'm unsure. And with the uncertainty that we have in our economy at this stage right now, I'm unsure why we're continuing to pursue this. My other concerns with the path are that we don't have a full comprehensive view of how this stretch of the path is going to connect up with other parts of the path that will be included over here. Many of us have talked about the need to have a comprehensive path plan that is in the budget for $25,000. I have offered to help lead that citizen team to put that plan together. This is something that I used to do professionally and I have confidence that I would be able to help the city to do this. And I think that this is something we need. We need citizen involvement to help build advocacy for this plan or for this path plan throughout the city so that we're not continuing to have this back and forth between citizens who want it and citizens who don't. We need to identify who it is within the city who's going to have this path go along their stretch of the road and make sure that they're given the opportunity early to comment and be included in those design decisions. Right now, many of us just learned last week when the utility people were out digging holes in all of our front yards that they're planning on moving the telephone poles from Price Road, from Price Road to disaster road across the street from the west side of the road to the east side of the road to accommodate the path on that side. Well, the problem with that is that now we'll have telephone wires stretching our road, which we don't currently. The other thing is that those telephone poles are currently hidden among the trees because there's very mature trees on that side of the road where those telephone poles are really unnoticed because they're kind of hidden. But now they're going to be on a stretch of road that is completely vacant. There's a garden on that side and there's grassy, grassy areas. So it's really going to be kind of an unsightly change. And this is something that was not included in any of the prior design discussions for any of us to know was going to be part of this design. The final concern that I have with the path besides the financial impacts to the city is the fact that there's so many crosswalks included. And you know, we have many children who are going to be using this path. And I think that we really need to be thinking about the design and how we're going to make that the safest possible design that we can have for our community. And that's why we need to know how this path is going to continue on from either side. And right now we don't know that. So thank you for hearing me.
Great. Thank you for your comments. Who would like to be next?
Hi, I'd like to be next. Peggy Rittenhouse. Address is 2520 Nagawicca Road. I just want to make sure that I'm heard as far as I second agree or agree with Cindy Thomas, with Mary and with Sandy Felker. But I also wanted to say I've been here less, just barely a year. And I've had no contact as far as what is happening in my front yard. People digging in my yard, spray painting in my yard, flags in my yard multiple times. I just want to know what is going on. You guys keep changing things. I thought this was supposed to be on hold because you have to rebid it out. My other question is what happened to the other alternative proposal? I thought there was another cheaper proposal to do this pedestrian pathway. What happened to it and why aren't we looking at that again? Versus adding more expense and going way over the budget. So that's my question is can, is there any way I could see this, the other proposal? Can I see what's going on with my front yard since I've only been here barely a year? And I'd like to get more updated of what's going on. And I also have to say I, I'm listening to the special assessment and charging it to these businesses that some of them are not even opened yet. Small shops that are going to hit, get hit with this extra money and this extra cost. What if it was your small gift store or a spa or a haircut place, et cetera? Wouldn't you be shocked as a Delafield citizen or a city business owner to get the special assessment, especially during this time of the pandemic? These are just some of my concerns and I would like to have it documented. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much for your comments. Who would like to be next? Are there any other citizens' comments? Hearing none, citizens' comments are now closed. Okay. We'll move on to item number two, consent agenda. Is there a motion for the consent agenda?
I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Great. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Passes. Great. Now we'll move on to item number three, committee reports. Licenses. I see we have none. Planning Commission, Mr. Iker.
Yeah, these, these are relatively easy ones, I think. The first one, item 3B subset I is for a CSM, this is a, this is a lot that's an existing house for a long time. It's just, it's between the St. John's Military Academy and Oakwood Road where there's an existing structure and accessory building and a garage where there's a substandard lot. It's very thin strip of land that's under one ownership with the primaries, primary lot. And they just want to combine them into one lot. Essentially what it does is eliminates an unbuildable piece of land. It's already under the same ownership as another piece of land to allow them to be just one lot like they should be. It gives them probably the biggest lot on the block, but about half as big as lots that are just about 300 yards north of them. Doesn't change zoning, doesn't change use. It's kind of house cleaning thing. So I'll make a motion to approve the CSM for Andrew and Michelle Schneider for 419 Wisconsin Avenue that was unanimously approved by the planning commission.
I'll second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Passes.
And item 3BII is to change the, or amend the conditional use site plan for Delafield Heartland. The water pollution, is that what it is? Water Pollution Control Commission? Anyways, it's, it's Delhard Land, which is behind Cushing School. And the, and item 3BII is similar, but we'll do these one at a time. And this is just to allow the use to be amended to allow for solar panels similar to what's on Rasmus Road up north, northwest corner of the city. This was unanimously approved as well. This is just to allow them to explore the idea if, if they come to terms with the contractor to put solar panels for energy on that piece of property. So I will make a motion to approve that conditional use update for Delhard.
I'll second.
Great, thank you. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Looks like Phil had a comment. Thank you. Sorry about that. Mute was still on.
Oh.
It worked really well. I did have a question regarding that as well as the, the next one on the agenda here. That area is right next to a conservancy and because of the surface area that would wind up, the flat surface area that would be incurred with the the new solar panels. Noting that it's at the top of a hill there and adjacent to the conservancy. I would like to have some kind of investigation just to see what the, the prosody of the ground is or else if there's a small retention can be made or something. I just would not want to be having the city liable for an increase in runoff. I know it's similar to the one in Rasmussen Road, but it looks like it's a larger project. And that one on the north side of town actually is a, a different geographic layout. So I, I'm concerned about the water. I was over there during the storm this last weekend and there's a considerable amount of runoff already.
Well, well, I would suggest that, that changing the conditional use doesn't necessarily mean that this, the exact plan is approved because that will come to the council, at least for the the, the city's portion of it on 3BII. And then also go to Delhard for approval for that piece as well. So if there's stormwater management issues, I'm sure that that would, that would come up. I'm not an expert on the matter, but I, I don't, do not believe that that impacts it. But this is not a final approval for any contracts or go ahead to construct them. It's us allowing the conditional use to be changed. Maybe Tom can elaborate a little bit more about that?
Yeah, Tim, I will say that the plans are included in this approval. So the intention is this is the approval of plans. I'm going to mute you. I think you're causing feedback. This was intention is, was to be the final approval of plans. The one thing that will come back to the city is the final agreement of the lease terms. And then Phil, to address your concerns, solar panels are not considered impervious surfaces. The water that hits the panels will fall to the ground like it always has. And also the solar panels at the city site happen to be literally at the top of bank of a stormwater pond. But I would say that this is not additional impervious surface area. Water hits the panels, falls to the ground and then would go where it, where it always has gone, either surface runoff or infiltrate into the ground depending on the quantity of rainfall.
Seems to me to be similar to a rooftop and as a collection. And it would seem to increase the point at which water is being collected and could potentially cause problems with that because it does not have as much time to soak into the soil that's there. It's not, the rain does not disperse as evenly. So I, I do have a concern just.
We've got Kirk Kindred on the call. Kirk, are you available to comment, Will?
I assure him. Hey, Tom and Phil, thank you for your comments. So the, the array is actually, one you're talking about is technically right above the retention pond there. And so any of the water runoff is going to go where it would have gone. And the, and the surface area is, is glass and directly beneath it, there's very little, little rainwater that hits. But again, you're talking about a surface area that is only about eight feet wide. So it's, it's, it's actually pretty small and the rainwater is just going to fall right down either in the retention pond or behind it because we're building essentially just to the south or just to the north of that retention pond that's already existing.
So does that help you, Phil?
I, yes. Where's the retention pond you're referring to? Because there's the conservancy, which is in between.
So, so the retention pond is just to the north of the old storage building and to the south of the array.
On correct, it's just the marsh that's there?
Yep, that little area. That the city had to put in when they built the building.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Are there any other questions or discussion on this topic? I'm holding that extra second just in case somebody doesn't have that mute button managed. So all in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Passes.
So I will, item, item 3B3 or III. This is the same, this is the same project we've just been discussing since a separate item that requires a separate vote. This is for the city specifically. So I'll make a motion to approve the amended conditional use site plan for solar panels for the city of Delafield and 218 North Cushing Park Road.
I'll second.
Already, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Passes. Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Iker. We will move on to 3C Lake Welfare Committee. Phil?
Thank you. There was no meeting, so there's no minutes.
Great. All right, we'll move on to D, Park and Rec. Mr. Grimmer?
No meeting, no report.
All right, we will move on to E, Public Works. Mr. Barron?
Well, we had our meeting and the longest discussion was the item that was commented on in, in the public comments. The committee unanimously agreed to move ahead with the, the project as modified under discussion. What I want to do is make a motion first. And the one other, on the minutes is that we moved, we moved and I moved to reject the bids that were submitted on the Nagawicca Road project and authorize a rebid of the project based on the city engineer's plans and recommend the same to the common council. My motion didn't include, but I will include here that the, the project could be completed in 2020 or 2021 based on the recommendation of the city engineer.
I'll second.
Okay, so then I'll make a few comments. And I did make notes from the public comments here. So I, I, there's a few things that I want to clarify. The project did come in high. It was, it was based on the design and recommendations by the city. And I will know, I will tell you historically, we always put often very stringent requirements in it, including requiring flagmen and things like that, flag people that take care of traffic. After the bid was, came in so high that the city asked the, the loberter, you know, what, what impacted the project? And that they commented on some of the items in there, which resulted in us taking another look at it. One of the more obvious ones is the, the common council, and I think was based on my motion, recommended that we extend the, the path to the, to the bridge over the Bark River when the public works committee had already taken it out, knowing that it probably added to the cost. So that's the origin of that. And so they're reiterating back to the, the, the plan they wanted to have. When, when they looked at the cost of grubbing and things like that, they realized the contractor had a lot of money in there to cut one tree that the city can take care of. The Phil recommendations involved trucking everything they dug out off the site and hauling fresh stone at high cost in. So the engineer did some test borings out there and realized that the existing subservices, sand and gravel, such that really the, the, the cost of the stone is unnecessary. Had they done test borings before they did the original design, they would not have put those requirements in there. I will comment that utilities always are required to move their structures when we do a road project. If we make changes in our needs of our, our right of way, they do it at their cost. And that's usually in most cases comes up. So and I will, I will acknowledge in the end, most of the cost here is not the path. It's, it's, it's filling the ditch. The ditch has been a concern for 30 years. And there, I understand that there was a cheaper plan years ago to not fill the ditch and put the path more near the right of way limits, which appear to be in people's front yards. So the filling of the ditch, which is very expensive, keeps the path near the street and doesn't impact the neighbors as much. But I've been an advocate of filling that ditch for years and which is why I'm one of the supporters of doing this project at this time. So that's my statement.
I have been perplexed by this project for a number of reasons. One, not the least of which is the cost, especially in a tight budget time when we're told as a council, we need to consider things like perhaps removing positions in things like the, and I know that there's public works and there's capital. and I know that there's public works and there's capital budgets and there and there and all that. But it's all coming out of the taxpayers a pocket, whether I reach in my left pocket or my right pocket, it's a pocket. I'm concerned because there's so much intelligent discussion brought to us about why it doesn't make sense. The project was expensive to begin with, came in over budget. And now we're being told that, oh, well, we were just trying to do it too well. Some of the things like the boring testings concerns me that should have been done ahead of time by the people proposing a bid. And now it's like, oh, well, this soil is better than we thought. Were they ripping us off? It makes me very nervous. I'm having a hard time rationalizing in the middle of a global pandemic when businesses are just barely trying to open now and our coffers are lean, to say the least, to then change everything on the fly with a disconnected concept. We have, as a common council, I think quite sensibly, put money in a budget to create a comprehensive plan. And that's something in my eight years on the common council that I have asked again and again. In fact, my little presence here on the common council originated with concern about making sidewalks and paths without a comprehensive plan connecting them elsewhere. And it seems to continue. So I I would really, I am, you know, lifelong runner, probably longer than some of you on this thing have been alive. And I'd like to run on those paths, but I'd like to have a connected plan and step back from the precipice. There's a saying in the South, this dog can't hunt and this path plan is that dog. It it can't hunt, it just doesn't work and we need to be smarter with the taxpayer dollars. That's all.
This is Wayne, I agree with Jackie. This, why can't we just wait? We've got budget considerations coming up for the next year. If this might be this year or next year, why don't we just look at this as doing it for the budget for next year and then have time to look at this plan again and do it right? I just don't think we're doing it correct right now. There's just too many variables. And again, not knowing what our finances are going to be, I just don't think this is one of those things we should be spending money on. We have the opportunity to put it up. Well, you know, I'd like to weigh in on a couple of things. One is I think with some knowledge of of how the city infrastructure is laid out, trying to contemplate a pedestrian or cycle path that would help connect the city. And I think if he came up with 100 different ones, you're going to get 99 or 100 that are going to put a path along Nagawicke Road. There's just not another collector's street or arterial along there that that connects south to north from Oakwood up to Rasmus Road. So that's that's one point. The other one is just the thought of, you know, continuing to hit snooze on something. You know, Jim mentioned that there's been an issue with just the aesthetics and just safety and just, you know, the the ditch that's been in the side of that road. And, you know, he mentioned it goes back 30 years and the idea of adding a path here goes goes back at least half that long. So the thought of saying, well, you know, I've got little kids and they can wait another year. I know some of the advocates for the road for the for the path. And, you know, their kids are all in high school and college and and they're doing it out of kind of remorse for not fighting a good fight back when their kids could have utilized the path and really benefited from it. So you know, I don't see this as a particular hardship for for a budget. I think there's a lot of other things that go into it. This capital expenditure actually folds in as I hate to say, you know, three or $400,000 as a routine, but it folds into what's kind of a normal, normal capital budget for us. And anyway, that those are those are my thoughts on it. Showing the fact that the the rebid that we're talking about doing is for 2020 or 2021 isn't saying it can wait till next year. It's saying giving contractors and bidders the opportunity to say, I can save you 15% if we do it. If we've got this kind of a time window, I can put it into whatever priority I want to and give you the lowest best price. And that's a luxury we usually don't have. So I I'm in support of going ahead as as planned. And that's my two cents.
Great, are there any other comments? And Tom, you're confirming that this needs to be revoted on by the city council? Yeah, the the bids do need to be formally rejected. So we need to formally reject the bids or and do we need to formally send the bids back out? Or we just need to formally reject the bids? I mean, you wouldn't have to formally send the bids back out, but it doesn't hurt anything. And that's what Jim included in this motion.
Motion is to reject the bids and reauthorize a new bid.
Somebody needs to mute Phil, unmute Phil.
Thank you. Might have proposed that we split the motion into two parts, one to reject the bids and a second motion to reset, resubmit them.
Well, again, again, the reject is is if Phil, I'm going to mute you again because it seems like yours is the one that's creating feedback. We do need to take action to accept or reject the bids, that's for sure. The standing direction from the council is they included the path in the budget. Therefore, the path is a go unless the council takes it out. But it doesn't hurt to reiterate in the motion that the intention is to move forward and bid again. But to take the project out requires a super majority. Correct, it would be a budget amendment.
And a super majority would be five, is that what you're saying?
That that's correct. Alternatively, a a simple majority could vote to delay the project but not amend the budget, not take it out of the budget. Okay, are motion makers comfortable with their motions?
Can we have Michelle reread the motion to make sure we got it?
I have the motion as Jim Barron motioned to reject the bid and reauthorize bids for the Nagawicke Road Path Project as recommended by the Public Works Committee on May 6. I didn't have any other additional Jim detail. I was going to put that in his discussion portion. Is that accurate, Jim?
It's accurate.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, I believe that was.
And Phil?
And Kason.
We got it, it passed for three?
Correct.
Okay, great. Then we will move on to item F.
Well, I I just want to know.
Sorry, Jim.
There, the other business. There's a new dog daycare facility going in behind Home Depot and that controversial with they submitted all their plans. And that's that's all in the minutes. The rest of the stuff is all in the minutes. So that's all.
Great, thank you. All right, we'll move on to F Delahart, Mr. Iker.
We have not had a meeting. Our main meeting was put off due to lack of urgency and safety due to the COVID thing. We're going to have a next meeting on June 16. But anyone who's on our grounds can visit or see the Rhubarb Festival at Hawksen on June 6 from 1:00 to 4:00. I encourage you to go.
And I want to segue real quickly, Tim. I like your background. Nice plug.
All righty, we'll move on to G Police Commission, Mr. Slogan.
Yeah, no meeting, no report.
Okay, H Library Board, Ms. Valdi.
We had a meeting and we met last Tuesday via Zoom conference. And we had a lot of things to talk about via Zoom, some of the highlights. As you know, the library closed on the 16th due to COVID-19. Within a week, they started launching digital programs. And now they have finished approximately 40 digital programs with a schedule of those programs Monday through Friday every single week. And it's pretty impressive because some of our staff members are fairly new. They were hired last fall. We're very proud of them and that's an understatement. Also, the staff is rapidly preparing to launch a digital summer experience starting June 15. So stay tuned for that. Curbside pickup is going to continue and is going very well. Patrons have been very grateful. They started late on the 27th. Now they run curbside pickup Monday through Friday, two until six. Patrons can call anytime during that time and ask questions regarding their account, curbside pickup, all of that stuff. They have 13 shifts and so far they have delivered 531 curbside interactions. Most importantly, our library board and our staff are taking the reopening process very seriously. There's a lot of really difficult and complicated things when you're considering a facility that has folks come in and they linger and touch a lot of stuff. And we have to consider like what to remove and how to how to accommodate that. So they're going to continue with our curbside setup and want to run that for as long as possible. And eventually, obviously, we're going to have in-person business as well as curbside. But that may be a while. We are in the library board, our head librarian, Stephanie Ramirez is in regular contact with other library groups. And they are coming up with with a very good plan, but it's not simple. So if you want more information, feel free to contact Stephanie or anyone in the library. But they have been amazing. And I'd like to do a shout out to our police chief and some of the other officers who have been reading books online. It's so cool. It's really neat to see. That's it.
Yeah, I just wanted to comment, you know, the the money through for the library, you know, does pass through the city. Right, but they're in ultimate control of their budget and they're in ultimate control of their decisions on how they open, when they reopen and so forth. And I'm fully supportive in the library making their own decisions and determining when and how they should open whenever they feel they're ready.
That's very good to know. Thank you, thank you very much.
Okay, we will move on to the I Zoning Board of Appeals, Phil?
No minutes, no meeting.
Sounds good. J Promotion and Tourism, Mr. Barron.
Well, we had a meeting this week and last week. And we have a new chair, Fred Marrero, and vice chair is Larry Firm and Jake Berg is the secretary. We're continuing to have the professional staff take our minutes. Mary Daniel was there and she made a presentation on the history of the library tax in the city. And that has been attached to the minutes for those that might be interested in it. We're really going to get going next month where we're going to start on our our budget for 2021. Certainly, the library. The the tourism tax is down right now because of the vague, the limited use of hotels. And that is a concern going into 2021. We have scaled back some of our marketing because some of our marketing was geared towards the DNC. And and specifically, we've had folks in the city comment that they wish we won't would don't, we don't want to draw people from, say, Illinois or Chicago at this time. And so we've kind of dropped some of those promotions. And those promotions would not be the most efficient at this time anyway. So next month, we start on a new budget. I think that's the majority of the things that that I had to comment on.
I'd like to say that whether we promote it or not, since Illinois has remained locked with Wisconsin opening up, people are coming, they're going to come.
The hotels, I talked to one operator that she she was running 20%, 25%. And they do have standards for cleanliness, rotating the rooms. So you're not, you you have a room that's been used maybe only once a week. And and there are national standards in that industry that are applied across the platform. And so they they view staying in our hotels as safe. And so if if you have folks from out of town need a place to stay, we have availability here in Delafield.
I have family that's been self-isolating in the suburbs of Chicago and they're looking forward to coming.
Okay.
Great, thank you, Jim.
Okay, we'll move on to K, the Country Fire Commission. Not aware of a meeting, but if there was, I would prefer you to the minutes. Lake Country Fire Board, Mr. Grimmer.
We did not have a meeting. However, as has been reported in in past meetings, we are pursuing consolidation with other municipalities. As of a couple of days ago, I wanted to pass along that the Village of Wales and the Town of Genesee both voted to move forward with partnering with Lake Country Fire and Rescue. The next step is review and agreement with the various municipalities. But that is that's a huge positive for the city, assuming assuming that that agreement pans out. Consolidation achieves cost savings through economies of sale, efficiencies, and will have a positive impact on our operating budget for 2021. That's all I have.
Yep, totally a win-win for both Lake Country Fire and Rescue, Wales and Genesee, as well as the city of Delafield. And these kind of cost savings and consolidation go right to the bottom line in our operating budget. So when people talk about things that we're doing to move forward and help reduce our operating budget costs, this is a great example of that.
Yeah, thanks to Tom and to the mayor and to our chief, our fire chief, who's been working. We've all been working really hard to make this happen. Hopefully, we'll get another partner, but if not, we've got a good, we've got a good relationship as is, so.
Great. Well, thank you. Great report. Good news to pass along. Okay, Tree Board, Mr. Grimmer again.
No meeting, no report.
Okay.
Have a question, when was the last Tree Board meeting? It seems like it's been a while and.
It has been a while. I'll have to get my, it's been. I mean, it's been at least January. We do, we are looking at having a park walk June 6, I believe, but I I don't think we've confirmed that yet.
I've just noticed some, a lot of trees coming down in my part of the world and I'm wondering, I would love to address the Tree Board, but it seems like I never know when they're meeting.
Yep, you can talk to our chair, Jim Reyer. Maybe we can add that to our next, make advance it to our next. Normally, it's quarterly, but we can possibly move it forward. I'll talk to Jim and see if we can do that.
Thanks, Matt.
Sure, my pleasure.
And just to clarify for you, Jackie, you know, I've left it up to each chairman to decide based on current environment and the urgency of their business for them to decide when and how to have their meetings. Most committees have chosen. Most committees have chosen not to meet in either way so far, primarily because they didn't think they had business that was, you know, urgent enough is I guess the best reason I can give you. So Park and Rec falls into that list. Public Works, Planning Commission, Library are on the other side of that discussion. So just so you're aware.
And I can confirm that Park and Rec meeting on the morning of June 6th.
Is that for sure?
That's, that is the date that we're looking for, yes.
That's the park walk.
That's the park walk, but the goal is to have a meeting as well.
Okay.
Great. Okay, our D, your Management Committee, I don't believe there was any meeting, so no report. Item four, unfinished business, I see none. Mayor's report. A, Discussion and Action to Approve the Resignation of Joe DeClos from the Board of Review. Original term was from 4/2019 to 4/2021. New member will take the remainder of the term. Is there a motion to accept?
I'll move to accept.
Second? I'm sorry, was there a second?
Second. Matt?
I got it.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
And thanks, Joe. I'll tell Joe thanks. He did a good job.
He did, he did. Opposed? Abstentions, passes. Okay, 5B, Discussion and Action to Approve the Resignation of Judy Spencer from the Board of Review and Zoning Board of Appeals. Original term, Board of B O R, 4-2020 to 4/2022. And ZBA from 4/2019 to 4/2021. New member to take the remainder of her term. Is there a motion to accept Judy's resignation?
Aye, so move.
Second.
Great. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, passes.
And thanks to Judy as well, right?
Yes. Okay, new business. A, Update Roundtable Discussion of Possible Action Regarding City's Response to COVID-19 Urgency and Wisconsin Supreme Court Action Invalidating the Safe at Home Order. So Tom, I'll let you go ahead and start this off, but I think we kind of want this to be an open discussion as we all look forward to under the new current scenario as of today, how we, as a city, move forward.
Yeah, just to introduce the item, this agenda item was originally intended to address what the city was doing with regards to businesses prior to the Safe at Home order being invalidated. And just to quickly go over that, what the city was doing is if we had businesses that were not complying with the state order, what our police department was going to do, what their plan was, was to refer them to the district attorney's office to seek a court injunction requiring them to close if they were not complying. Our police department did not have the need to pursue that at all. And then, as you all know, last week, Wednesday, we got the Supreme Court decision that invalidated Safe at Home. Initially, after that happened, we were expecting the legislature to put into play some emergency rules that would have some restrictions. It now looks like that's not their intention and not the direction that they're going to be going. And similarly, the county has chosen not to put any kind of order in place or regulations in place. Instead, the county, what they're doing is putting guidelines in place, recommendations. If you go to their website, they have a website specifically devoted to COVID issues. And they're promoting the different guidelines that they're recommending businesses and other people follow. It largely promotes the W E D C guidelines. And it also includes specific guidelines to various types of businesses from restaurants to hair salons to manufacturing and whatnot. What the county's looking to do is empower businesses to open up and be smart about it. They are still recommending that we have actions in place for our most vulnerable citizens that should be quarantining. They are still recommending to businesses to have some special business hours for high-risk population to be able to visit those businesses. And they also are making recommendations regarding mass gatherings. Right now, their recommendation is to avoid mass gatherings of more than 50 people together. It is hoped that that mass gathering requirement will increase over time. The county executive on a call today, he was just throwing out some numbers that was kind of more speculative. So by no means are these firm numbers. But he was saying perhaps we could get to mass gatherings of 100 people sometime in June. And perhaps we could get to something around 250 by the 4th of July. But he reiterated that'll all be data-driven. The county health department is still going to be tracking the data in the county to understand how this pandemic is progressing here. And then when you get into mass gatherings, there was specific mention about festivals and whatnot and how that would make some festivals difficult. But again, the decisions need to be made locally. The counties, what they're providing are just guidelines or recommendations with no enforcement tied to them. With regards to the city, the one thing that I do want to say is we are going to be opening back up to the public on May 26th. We will have safety provisions in place. We'll have plexiglass screens up at the front counter, similar to what we did during voting. There'll be a limit of two people in the vestibule area at the front counter at a time. And then there'll be social distancing requirements and signage in the lobby for people to follow. The one thing I do want to give a shout out to our city clerk, Michelle Lutke. Over the past two years, she has done a phenomenal job about bringing our city services to a point where we can offer them online and provide really good customer service remotely. And we were able to provide our full range of customer service to our residents throughout the time that City Hall was closed. So kudos to Michelle for the excellent job she did.
Thanks, Tom.
Bring us to that point. You're welcome and very deserving. With that being said, I'll also mention that with regards to parks, we opened up our tennis courts, our volleyball courts, basketball courts. Most of the playgrounds are open. The one exception is Fort Cushing. And as a separate agenda item, we will get to specific discussion about Fort Cushing and the two park bathrooms. With that, I'm interested to hear the county's, or the council's comments on how you think the city's doing and if you think there's other things that we should be doing.
Well, I'll lead because I know I talked with you, or at least the mayor, about having this as a discussion topic because, you know, I've been asked by a couple of people about certain items. And I thought it's just important for us to make sure it's publicly known that we're all aware of what's going on, obviously. And that, you know, the city, the date has been kind of bound by what our state has put down as an edict. And with that lifted, you know, we're not, you know, the term Wild West was thrown out there and we're not endorsing that. I think that the email endorsement that the mayor sent out just late today regarding the W E D C guidelines, that's the State Wisconsin Economic Development Commission, I think. It's a fabulous resource for businesses to reference. It's not a one-size-fits-all. It's really, really empowering individual businesses to look at specifically their environments, who they serve, what they think their customer service should be. And I think, and included in those recommendations are lots of links. If anyone goes to the CDC site, which they reference and just types in reopen, they've got a great guideline list for individual businesses to look at as far as cleaning before reopening, social distancing, all those things. And so for, I think for any one particular expert or authority to weigh in and say, this is what we absolutely need for this situation and this business owner is a little overreaching. And that I think individual businesses in our area should know that if their customers don't feel safe, they're not going to, they're not going to want to patronize the business. And so I think this is all positive. And I think the way that the city's approached it has been very prudent. And I appreciate all the work that staff has done and everything else, especially with the election and and all that. So, you know, I recommend staying the course and kind of following the lead of what's going on with our hierarchy, what's going on at the state. You know, we complied. Now it's kind of in the county's hands, is the state idols. And I read the recommendations from the county and Paul Pharaoh and that group. And I think recommendation versus mandate is going to be embraced. And I bet we come up with a more conservative approach than even what a mandate, you know, offers. So I'm all in favor of what's going on with the city so far. And I, you know, I say, Tom and staff, stay the course.
I would agree. I think what's interesting is that our businesses have been leading really well. I was at our local gym this morning. Yeah, I was. And then they were set up for us beautifully and with a lot of safety precautions and social distancing. And to do the group exercise classes, you have to register on their app. And but it was just that we were, everybody was, you know, greeted in a very friendly way, which was lovely. But it was set up in a way that was protecting people. And so the businesses were, that, you know, was doing that. I know the local restaurants have been coming up with plans. And one of the things that I have seen is just a wonderful message between all the patrons who, you know, we love our restaurants and all the places we go. My hair salon is back. But they, you know, I mean, we've been getting products or, you know, picking things up curbside. And it's been a wonderful back and forth support. And so rather than wait for someone to tell Delafield what to do, it's been nice to see Delafield doing what it needs to do. It's been very respectful and I was pleased because I was very nervous. When I was afraid, some of the things I saw in other parts of the state, I was afraid that folks are going to be elbow to elbow, but they haven't been. They've been smart and it's great to embrace our businesses and see the citizens doing the right thing. So, yeah, I also asked, what are we doing or what can we say? And so I'm very optimistic. And, yeah, thanks for the discussion.
Anybody else like to chime in? I mean, what have you heard from your constituents? Have you been contacted at all? Any other older folks want to?
Sure.
I haven't been. But I
Go ahead, Jim.
I do want to say, there's always a variety of views on how we handle this in this community. And I am very sensitive to those that are concerned about their own health. And each one of us may have an opinion on, you know, what level of separation you should pursue. But I always address everyone respectfully and assume the most conservative is that they wish to be safe. And that's my observation. And if you handle yourself that way, and I think Jackie's comments about our restaurants, if you go in there, you can see that everyone is working together. And that's going to encourage the people who are concerned to maybe come out when, to patronize something, so.
And I would just reiterate, Jim and Jackie and Tim, the goal of our businesses should be to instill confidence in their patrons that they're taking precautions, just like at our local fitness center and everywhere else that we go to visit. Folks should walk in there and feel confident, just like they did at the election. People who showed up in person really saw the due diligence of our clerk, who did a great job in, you know, distancing and putting up all the protections that were needed to keep people safe. You keep doing that and I think that's absolutely moving in the right direction.
All right. Tom, anything else you wanted to get feedback on from the council?
Nope, not under, not under a.
Okay. All right, then we will move on to B. Discussion and Possible Action Specific to Opening of Fort Cushing and the Public Bathrooms at Cushing Park and Fireman's Park. And Tom, maybe you can lead us off with some of the comments we've heard from our neighboring municipalities on what they've been doing.
You know, I'll say, neighboring municipalities, what they're doing is they're opening up their parks, they're opening up their playgrounds and their park restrooms. But they're putting up signage saying, you know, use at your own risk. You know, follow CDC guidelines. And they're letting people know the city's not doing any more cleaning or sanitizing than what they normally do. And just kind of leaving it up to people to make their own decision. I'm comfortable with going that way. We're in a position where we could have the Cushing Park bathroom open tomorrow. We still need to wait for a safe water sample for Fireman's Park. So that might be three to five days before we could have that one open. But I really think that Fort Cushing is a is a different example. When you consider how many children we can have on that structure at one time. And when you consider that many of those children on that structure are three and four and five years old and are not very adept at social distancing and coughing into elbows and keeping their noses clean and whatnot. So that's a tough one as far as I'm concerned, as far as whether we try to respect that special condition there and keep that closed for a bit longer. Or do we just go ahead with opening that up? And again, let people know that it's open for them to use at their risk.
Tom, how often are those bathrooms cleaned?
They get cleaned well on Monday and Friday. They get checked every day for restocking and cleanup of any unique messes or whatnot.
And what's the ability to increase that frequency?
We could do some increase, significantly increasing, like cleaning it every day or more than once a day would be difficult in our department. But it's a matter of prioritizing. And, you know, if the council identifies increased cleaning as a significant priority, we can make that happen.
Matt, I'd like to know what you think about that. You're our healthcare guy.
Yeah, well, as far as positive cases within our own community, I would always refer folks to the Waukesha County site. They do a great, great job. It's COVID-19 confirmed case dashboard. It has, it has a few different things there. Number one, it has a map, kind of a heat map on which communities are undergoing significant increases and which are not in their COVID-positive test results. It has confirmed cases, rates of positive tests based on the number of tests taken. And so I agree with the county and county executive Pharaoh, we should be data-driven. And my latest information within this zip code is we have, I believe, we've had three confirmed COVID cases. You know, within the City of Delafield or at least within our zip code, I can't get that specific. I don't know that anybody can. But our our rate of decline continues to be consistent with the state's rate. I know over the last few weeks, that percent positive result has decreased week by week by week. I think we're in the, I think we're in the 4% range as a state. So the incidence does seem to be So the incidence does seem to be decreasing in terms of its rate. But I know other communities are not, are not necessarily faring so well. As far as the confined space, I think Tom brings up a valid point that, you know, Cushing Park that, you know, is literally, not figuratively, it's literally fenced in. And it is a great park for small kids. But their ability to hygiene and distance is non-existent. So we'd have to rely on the, on the good judgment of parents to, you know, potentially avoid that park when they find that it is heavily trafficked.
What about cleaning? How often? Man, I'm thinking during, especially during this time, it might merit more frequent cleaning.
COVID stays, my understanding from CDC is COVID stays active viable on plastic and metal up to 48 hours. You can still get trace amounts, but it's not enough to necessarily infect after that. As far as, you know, somewhat porous surfaces like wood and whatnot. I don't know. And I don't think the CDC knows.
What about something, Tom, just like if you do Monday, Wednesday, Friday, then you have a better shot at, you know, getting it clean, but the virus doesn't live longer than that 48 hours. I don't know. It's just a thought.
You're talking about cleaning the playground structure?
No, I'm talking about the bathrooms.
Okay.
The structure, no, I think you, parents have to play, have the kids play at their own risk. And one of the things I did read somewhere was that being outside, it will, the virus will, you know, doesn't have as much longevity. And but yeah, if I were, you know, with a toddler, that would be a tough one. You know, because it's fun to play and you want to get them active and outside. And but I know I'm talking about the restrooms.
Yeah, we could do Monday, Wednesday, Friday.
Just Mike.
And, you know, as other municipalities are doing, I think that signage is paramount. I'm reluctant to say, you know, give a swim at your own risk. But with the understanding expressing to the public that these facilities are not cleaned, the swing sets are not cleaned. And they should not carry the expectation that these areas are safe. And then reiterating guidance from CDC and from Waukesha County and what Wisconsin or Waukesha Economic, Economic WEDC that, you know, if you are immunocompromised, if you are one of those individuals who has high susceptibility for complications and hospitalizations, which is, you know, our, our cardiovascular, our asthma, anybody that's immunocompromised, anywhere with cardiac disease, et cetera, anybody over the age of 60. You know, you're at more risk for hospitalization and significant complications from this. And it just isn't you if you live with these other people. That needs to be expressed on that signage as well. So we can, you know, there's always the, like was said earlier, there's people are coming at this very passionately. And like Jim said, we need to respect each other's point of view. And we have, you know, we've got a balance between our social responsibility, but we also have a balance between our individual freedom. I mean, that's the, that's the tough thing that I'm struggling with.
Yeah, Matt, thanks for all that. That's, that's very pensive and very responsible. Everything, I agree with everything you said. And I, and I agree too, that Fort Cushing is, is unique. A unique park. And I mean, it, it, it doesn't just passively, it actively encourages interaction between, between strangers, meaning little kids. I mean, there's all sorts of stuff in there to lure kids to the same spot. And I'm very reluctant to say drop that orange snow fence in front of Fort Cushing. But I, I'm a strong advocate for saying, open up the bathrooms. Because we've got a lot of seniors and, and other people and just families that that know when they go into a bathroom, I mean, you shouldn't be washing it. It's right there. You should be washing your hands. And you should be taking care. And it's, it's not a clean place when you go into a bathroom. But when you go to a playset, you're assuming a certain degree of assurance that the city's endorsing it as a safe place. So I mean, if, if I were to just, you know, wave my magic wand right now, I'd say, open up, open up the public bathroom. So the people taking walks and using the trails and getting outdoors have a, have a spot that they know that they're not going to have to, you know, hold it for an hour. They can take a break. But I think Fort Cushing should be perhaps a sign posting that instead of just closed because of COVID, you know, we're looking forward to, looking forward to opening it sometime very soon and kind of leave it at that. And see where, see where we're at in a month. So that's, that's where I, that's, those are my thoughts on.
I can get behind that. Tom or Kent, have there been any calls to the city from constituents? I have the cushions in my district and I haven't heard anything yet.
So Matt, the only thing we had was that one email from one of your constituents early on about the bathrooms at Cushing Park, but nobody has complained about Fort Cushing being closed.
Okay.
All right. So I think I'm hearing, open the bathrooms as soon as we can, clean them on Monday, Wednesdays and Fridays. And post the signage as commented and leave the play area, Cushing Park with the orange fence up for at least till the next council meeting.
For now, for now.
Yep. Is there a motion?
I will make the motion. I'll make a motion. Yeah, is that, you can't make an emotion.
I didn't mean to. I was just trying to summarize so we could move on.
All right. Well, I'll make a motion to open up the bathrooms at Fireman's Park and, and, and Cushing Park. And leave the Fort Cushing closure sign up for now, along with a disclaimer on the bathrooms that they're cleaned as they've always been cleaned and not particular to any other kind of a outbreak.
All right. So just to clarify, Kent mentioned adding a Wednesday cleaning and Tim said, clean as they've always been cleaned.
I, I don't see the difference, but.
I, I think Tim means they're not being sanitized every hour, right?
Yeah, I do. I do. I did say Monday, Wednesday, Friday, but they're not clean to any different type of level specific to COVID.
Okay.
And I'll second. Thank you.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions, passes? Item six, discussion possible action regarding this decision-making process to determine whether to hold a city meeting in person or remotely.
Yeah. So we talked about this a little bit where we've had a few council meetings where we've had some back and forth between in-person and remote meetings. So just wanted to open up that discussion and see if we can get some specific direction for staff. So we know how to proceed in the future. And it would be good if we have that discussion, not only for council meetings, but as the mayor indicated earlier in this meeting, his direction to chair people of other boards, commissions and whatnot. They should be making that call based on their need to have a meeting and whether the agenda topics can adequately be discussed remotely, or if there's a need for them to be in person. So would be happy to have some direction regarding this issue.
Well, I'm one that brought this up early and
Come on, Bobby.
My primary motivation is that we have this television facility where most of the people watch our meetings. And I know we produce a tape even of this meeting and it's now on YouTube. But I think that even today, you take the statements and we went through this at the Public Works Committee meeting from the folks that want to make a comment. We certainly hear the comments. But it's, it is a little different making the decisions when they're not looking you straight in the face. And I know at Public Works, we probably should have addressed some of the comments, which is why I did it earlier today. I have to admit, we didn't. It's almost like you kind of move on and we just had our discussion. And I, I think the, the face to face is important. I think it's important when we met with representative of the Heartland Sportsman's Club and looked them straight and had, and got, and asked a couple of questions. Now with that said, out of respect for everyone, it didn't hurt us to have one or two council members calling in. And I think our room is large enough to have a couple of folks if they want to come in and make public comment. I, I think that requiring things to be in writing is better. I think most people who make good presentations reduce it to writing and also hand it to us as Mary Daniel did at our meeting. And we made it part of the minutes. I just think we give, we give things up when we give up access. And by running the, the meeting this way, and I think we have a lot to be gained by using the facility that we have to keep people safe and to produce a record that people can watch as they are accustomed to do, doing. There's a lot of folks that don't have computers or don't have. I found out my own computer at work does not have a camera or a microphone. And that's fine. Waukesha County is rotating their way through. We, we use old machines, but it, 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 it leads me to think there are a lot of folks out there that don't have the, the access to these, the technologies and, and a traditional old fashioned meeting where they know we're meeting and they can walk in the room and make a comment. The only time you really will have a problem is if there's so many that the room can't safely accommodate them. We used to have that problem at our old, in the old city hall and we had too many people show up for a meeting. Well, then we're going to have to adjust. We're going to have to write a television outside. We'll deal with that when that case comes. But I, I, I'm an advocate for not having Zoom meetings, having them in person in the facilities that we already have.
Just a comment there, Jim. We do have a TV set up in the atrium now. So as needed, we can, you know, expand the area for participation to include that area in addition to the council chambers.
I echo Jim's comments about the in-person meeting. And, you know, I, I just have to say that I've been also an advocate of kind of holding meetings down to the lowest common denominator where if somebody feels uncomfortable, there will respect what their own guidelines personally are for safety, as well as what the standard is for, for the public. And part of that standard for the public seems to be kind of rising to the top or, or leveling out to be, if you're going to have people interacting in a, in an open space, that people wear masks. And it's not been my practice. And I know that that's becoming some sort of a social judgment issue, but if, if, you know, I, I, I think that if we, if we had the mandate that people come with face and, you know, mouth and nose protection into our meetings, I'd be all for it if that would be kind of a a concession or a, or accommodation that would make, make more people feel comfortable with meeting in public. I think maybe doing that until further notice might be a good gesture.
I, for one, would be very, very grateful to finally meet everybody face to face. But at the same time, I really appreciate the chance to listen to Mary Daniel in person here. I, I know it's really not in person. But if we did have meetings downtown, I don't know if Mary would actually be able to be there in person. I think she'd be probably asking somebody to read her statements so that they are put in the record again. And, and actually, I see the numbers going down for Wisconsin, for Waukesha. But at the same time, the Supreme Court decision isn't five days old yet. And I, I certainly hope everything continues as is, but I think we'll find out in 10 days, two weeks, if this trajectory is going to continue downward or if we're going to be going backwards. So I I'm not sure how to wait two weeks with making a decision to actually convene together and zoom or in person. But at, at this point, there's so many new variables. I'm inclined to, at least for myself, to meet virtually.
I don't, nice. Someone made me sound like the devil there for a minute. I would agree. I much prefer three dimensions. I hate having to teach. It's hard to motivate my students who aren't motivated to begin with when I'm not near them. And so, and I don't like having our common council meetings looking like an expanded version of the Brady Bunch. That said, I think when we're in the middle of a global pandemic, regardless of what I feel about it, it's more a logic thing for me. We don't know. We don't know enough to make decisions. So as businesses open up, they're being very thoughtful and cautious and rightfully so, as should we. Our next council meeting isn't until the middle of June. And I'm going to guess by before then, we're going to know a whole lot more. I think what folks have said about Phil, Phil's observation about numbers are, you know, our numbers have been going down for Wisconsin, which is great, but I think that's because we've had a stay at home order. So we've had five days now. And people seem to be trying to open up cautiously. And maybe that's what needs to be done. And by middle of June, we'll be comfortable having maybe a social distant three dimensional meeting. I think the request that was sort of, I know I was part of that. Like what is the basis upon which we make the determination rather than I like this better? It's more of, so on what do we make that decision? Maybe we make it on the individual one where if you're comfortable, show up. And if you want to remain isolated for whatever precautionary reason, that as well. That, that would be a submission of mine.
So I'll just chime in too. I mean, my, my preference is to have them in person for all the reasons that Jim mentioned. And I, I'm, obviously we'd make it accommodating for people that aren't comfortable to call in. And, you know, if people choose, we've had people to, you know, we've been open every meeting in person for planning commission all along. And we followed all the CDC guidelines. We've kept people separated. And I think the public, as well as the applicants have had a good opportunity to participate in ways that for more or less, they always have. Until the numbers would start to swing in the other direction and give us some real concern, that would be my preference that we have the meetings in city hall for the council. But obviously things make a change in some dramatic direction. And the negative, then we have to rethink that. But based on what we know today and the meeting being out 30 months, I, my preference is to have it in, in person as well.
I'm just going to chime in real briefly. And the one time that we did have a hybrid meeting, all three of the people that participated remotely expressed that they had difficulty hearing. So I'll just share that.
Yeah, I don't know if that was a passive thing, like I, I asked folks to move their mics closer to their mouth because I know sometimes when we're all in the meeting room together, Mike, who runs the meetings, the audio and video for our meetings in the council chamber has requested that council members put the mic closer to their mouth. Cause yeah, I did have difficulty, but I do sometimes in chambers. put the mic closer to their mouth. Cause yeah, I did have difficulty, but I do sometimes in chamber. I'm, I have a hearing disability. So you betcha, I actually hear better with this, but that's okay. I think the bigger question is on what basis do we make that, that determination again, the process?
I'd agree. We need to be data-driven. You know, just like all our decisions on this are going to be. I absolutely agree. In-person is better than remote. It's better than Zoom. It's better than phone-in. And I agree that you deny people on both sides of the issue. People who are immunocompromised or at risk, don't want to show up to a live meeting. And people who don't have, you know, the IT necessary to join a meeting like this are denied their right to, to be heard. So as challenging as it is, I don't, you know, I, I would probably advocate for that hybrid meeting still. And if, yeah, I and, and, you know, I think what was done for the plan commission meeting, when I watched it on YouTube, it was very well done. You know, chairs moved and I know there was a, the TV out in the vestibule and the distance between the commission members was great. I think all the CDC guidelines were followed there, which was very impressive. So.
I agree as well. I, I, I was at the last council meeting when we had the hybrid approach. I thought it worked. I, I understand the technical complications with the audio, but I have to figure there's got to be a better way with the technology we have to fix that. I think it would be a statement that we're all willing to also, you know, work in a manner that's open to the, the city as everyone else is opening. We, I felt very safe at the council meeting last time. I also felt, I, I think it's easier to cancel and change course to a Zoom meeting versus if, if we are data-driven where the data actually drops even further, it's harder to change from a Zoom to a personal meeting. I, I think if we, if we move forward, because at least from the common council perspective, like Jackie said, we're, that's not a month, until a month away, which is a lot of time. I would propose moving towards a live meeting, or at least I would, my, my feeling would be to recommend moving towards a live meeting, but leaving a hybrid option open for anyone that's not comfortable. And then if, if that has to be changed, based on the data changing dramatically, we can address it then.
I like it. I, I would support that, Doug. Thank you.
Tom, did you get the information you're looking for? Or you want some clarity or? You're muted, Tom.
Okay. I'm sorry about that. My, my point is maybe by the eighth of June, if, if we have a, a worst thing of the statistics, we certainly would stick with a Zoom meeting, but right now we should plan for a live meeting on the 15th. And I do agree with the notion that plan for a live, you can shift to Zoom because it's easier than going the other way. But three weeks from now, we should have this information.
When you say go to a live meeting, Jim, would you also be providing the option for people to participate remotely?
Yes, certainly. The call-in worked fine. And I do agree, if our mics aren't working, then we need to, we get, we need to make that right. Period.
I think we have an idea of how to do this then. I think Jim's idea of let's look in at, you know, a week out. So three weeks from now. What are the data and what are the trends and make a determination? I would agree. I would much prefer to meet in three dimensions. But at the same time, I think we need to be thoughtful and respectful. So yeah, I think that's a great, everybody had great ideas.
Okay. But just to be clear, if we're going to be data-driven, you're leaving it up to the mayor and staff to make that decision then, right?
We would, I'd look over to the Waukesha County website. And, you know, right now it looks like we're flat to slightly decreasing as far as cases. And if there's some new uptick, obviously we have to reassess. But I don't know. If you want a motion, I'll say we should meet live unless on the eighth of June, we find out that there's a deterioration in the statistics regarding COVID.
I'd suggest.
Also be a hybrid in the sense that people can call in and listen in by telephone.
I'll, I'll second that if we base it on the recommendations coming out of Waukesha County. They've got a Board of Health.
That's fine. That's, that's the reference point.
Okay. Sounds good. So I second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, passes.
Well, I'm sorry, Mayor, I'd just like to, I passed on discussion, but I would like to add that the concern over how public comments are delivered and how we take them as council members. I, I'd like people to understand, although there is certain things that can be communicated in person with in-person comments and that. Their comments are not lost or forgotten or disregarded just because they're written or submitted via email. Sometimes that's, that's even more effective. It's everyone digests information differently. And we do take all that input and people read the packets. And so I just want to assure the public that their comments, don't feel pressured to come to a meeting if you're uncomfortable. Your comments as written or emailed are very seriously considered in weight.
I believe last meeting I said there were some comments that actually impacted my thoughts on an issue. And they were written.
Jim, just to follow up on that comment real quickly. Some people are upset that when they submit written comments that are not read during the meeting, that their comments don't get included in the minutes of the meeting. And just to clarify that, the minutes of the meeting are a record of the meeting. So if you, if you email your council member or the full council separate from the meeting, that's not officially part of the meeting. And that's why it's not represented in the, the minutes of the meeting.
But, but I read those comments in the meeting packet and they seem to remain there.
What's the difference in the packet and minutes?
Yes.
Okay. We all set? All right. Seeing no more discussion. Item seven, report of city officials administrator.
Yeah, just one item. We do have a significant construction project coming up in the city where the Department of Transportation is going to be redoing the deck on the Highway 83 bridge over Highway 16. That work is going to be starting right after Memorial Day. And they are looking to have the bridge back open to traffic by August 12th. Most significant action is going to be right now scheduled for June 1st through 3rd. And that's when there's going to be the bridge deck removal, which is extremely noisy. For those council members that'll recall that, that we're here in 2017, we had a discussion with the DOT back then about whether or not to allow overnight construction, which would allow the deck to be removed quicker or to require them to do it during the day, which would take a longer time. And we did allow for the overnight construction. So June 1st through 3rd, the people that live in that area, we might be receiving some complaints for them. But the DT will be sending out a, a notice handout in advance with contact information for those complaints. So hopefully those complaints will go to DOT, but some of those might come to to us. Doug, you in particular might field some of those. So just a heads up on that.
Now, I do remember, yeah, that discussion, Tom. And we did decide it was better to compress the noise rather than stretch it out. So it.
Yeah, I agree with that. Tom, is the bridge going to be closed for both north and south traffic the whole time? Or is it going to be partially open or what's, what's the plan?
The bridge is going to be closed from May 27th through August 12th. There will be detours signed in place. And Highway 16 itself will at sometimes have lane closures and sometimes be completely closed under the bridge. But that detour will be just an easy on and off using the ramps. So if you want to go through on Highway 16, you just get off on the ramps and right back on on the ramp.
And the north-south detours, you know, who decides that? Obviously would be pushed over the Highway C or they would be routed to go on 16 and get off at C and come back. Or, or are they putting people on Beddleton Road or, you know, the route of traffic they selecting for detour?
I can get that to you and we'll get all that information up on the city's website anyways, but I'll get that to you directly, Doug.
Thank you.
And Tom, can you just, could you also please try to verify the methodology they're using for the notices? Is it certain streets or is it certain distance? I'd just like to take a look at that and see if, if, if we think any supplementation is needed to that. I'm assuming not, but I guess I'd just rather double check.
Yeah, I, I think it's just going to be the easy street apartments up there, but I can confirm that.
Yeah. So if it is just easy streets, then we definitely want to include Beddleton Road and we'll have to figure out a way to do that.
All right. I'll follow up on that.
Okay. Seven, B clerk, discussion and action on voucher list.
Yep. Just looking for a motion.
Move to approve the voucher list.
Okay.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, passes. Michelle, anything else under the clerk's report?
I don't have anything at this time. I'll be better prepared at the next meeting. Thank you.
Okay. Seven C, council request for future agenda items. No discussion of requested items. Are there any items the council would like on the next agenda? Hearing none, we'll go to eight correspondence. I'll refer you to the T Brookfield, New Berlin Cooperative Agreement Plan. And then we'll move on to nine, seeing no other business. This meeting is now adjourned at 8:53 PM. Thank you all for attending. We'll see you at the council chambers.
Welcome, Amy.
Welcome, Amy. And well done sitting through this.
I told her she didn't have to.
What a trooper.
It was nice to hear what was all going on.
No, it's, no, it's not.
Familiar with faces.
Good night.
Good night, everybody.
You'll have to give a recording.
You will.
Tom Hafner, I want to give you a call after the meeting. This is Suzy Thompson. Is that possible? Or can I just tell you right now, since there are only a couple of people on, did you know that, I did not.